That's my score. [laughter]
20, 20.
Wi-Fi here. The manager. I know how to get on the Wi-Fi. I know how to get on the Wi-Fi, I just can't. And I need room in the hallway. So, if it's a free Wi-Fi, I get it and you're going to accept it. And that's what it is.
March 21st introduced you, then April 3rd was a public hearing.
What's that? Good evening, everyone. This is a meeting of the Finance Subcommittee that has been scheduled for a little bit of time to go over a number of items that have been referred to the Subcommittee. Most recently was the parking rate information from a few weeks ago, but we also had referred real estate property valuation FY '18, even, I think perhaps we'll set up another meeting to talk about FY '19 after the manager has had a chance to look at the budget and see what the next step is. So if there's no objection, members of the Subcommittee, Council of Noon, Council of Millinazzo, Council of Conway is also in the audience, why don't we proceed right to the parking rate?
Chairman, I want to get a roll call.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry for that. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chairman Elliott.
Here.
Council of Millinazzo.
Here.
Council of Noon.
Here.
Three present.
Okay, well, we already went through it all. So with that, this is, I think it's one of the first Finance Subcommittee meetings that we have had since the new term, so welcome, Madam Manager. And why don't we, what's the wish of the body? Proceed with parking, or do we, I suspect that might be a long discussion, but why don't we start with that and we'll try to get to the other items and if not, schedule another meeting. Madam Manager?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Councilors Millinazzo and Noon, as well as Councilor Conway here this evening. We are here to provide, hopefully, information to the Subcommittee and to the Council regarding the issue concerning raising the parking rates in our parking garages. I understand this has been before the Council for a period of time, and when I came into the office a week and a half ago, almost two weeks ago, it was one of the first things that we took up to look at in terms of trying to provide some, as I said, information for the Subcommittee. So after meeting with the finance team and the parking garage administrator, we had several discussions about this, and I had asked our Chief Financial Officer and his assistants to prepare some data, five-year outlook in terms of the garages. And as I know, everybody here is well aware, the raise in rates is being proposed and had been proposed by the prior administration, and we are proposing it as well due to the fact, in part, that the rates had not been raised at all for 15 years. So that's one aspect to it, is the kind of static situation with the parking rates for 15 years. Naturally, costs have risen during that time, even to maintain the existing garages. But in addition to that, as we know, we are tasked with building at least one, if not two more, garages in the very near future. So I will go over the handout and then have our Chief Financial Officer Connor Baldwin drill down on the numbers, perhaps in further detail. But what this handout does is it illustrates that if we don't increase the rate, the enterprise fund in the parking garages will be insolvent by fiscal year 2021. And so what that would event, or the consequence of the enterprise fund becoming insolvent, would be that any expenses in excess would then necessarily go on the tax bills. And, you know, up until this point, the taxpayers of Lowell have not been, certainly, we built garages, but the building of the garages and the funding and the debt service has been paid out of the users from the garage and the enterprise fund and not the taxpayers of Lowell. So what we do know is that the new Hamilton Canal Innovation District Garage that is about to begin construction will cost approximately $35 million. And on the first page, which we illustrated here, you can see that in 2019, and again, I'll let Connor deal more directly with his analysis that he came forward with, but the annual outlook, you will see steadily from 2021, 2022, 2023, insolvency that will happen in the enterprise fund of the garages. Going over to the next slide in page three on your handout, the tax impact of this consequence, in other words, the insolvency, where that insolvency would have to be picked up by the taxpayers, will illustrate here that based on the FY '18 rate and based on the impact to the single, average single-family home, which is about $274,000 on this analysis, and that's the average single-family home at this point, it would have no consequence in FY 2019 or '20 because of the construction would not be completed or wouldn't be carried over. But starting in 2021, the impact on the average single-family home would be $36.56 a year. But moving forward, it increases steadily, 2022 to $107 a year, 2023, $174.11, and 2023, 2024, the average impact would be $229.20. I want to point out that this analysis applies to only one garage in the Hamilton Canal District. The one garage that we're talking about that we are obligated by agreements that were made, I think back in 2009, to build are to accommodate a number of things. The courthouse, that's going to be completed, we were told most recently in the legislature, probably in August of 2019, it's running ahead of schedule. It's also running under budget, surprisingly. But that courthouse will be coming online very soon. The obligation under the agreement that was made in 2009 envisioned a smaller courthouse, and the commitment was to provide up to 300 spaces in the new 925 space garage. Other spaces in that garage have also been spoken for, but since that time, the garage, the courthouse and its expansion, there are estimates as to what will be expected in terms of the demand for parking, and that is quite large, and I'll defer that to after the financial analysis. And so with the proposed rate increase, and it's my understanding, initially the rate increase that was proposed was a larger one than the one that is before the Finance Subcommittee. That was sent back, and an alternative plan of a lesser increase was come back, was sent back, and that's the one that we're including in this analysis here. So I will turn this over to the, unless there's a question at this point.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, on the Judicial Center, Madam Manager, did we negotiate a monthly parking fee with the users of that, or is it just on a daily basis?
My understanding is it would have been the same as whatever our current rates were. In other words, we were not obligated to 2009 rates, is my understanding, is that correct, Nick? Okay. And I do want to address the Judicial Center, the projections for demand of spaces, but I'll let the Chief Financial Officer talk about his analysis in more detail.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Through the chair, the revised proposal that's before the Subcommittee currently, the methodology used in putting together and our approach for formulating the new ordinance was such just to bring the cost of doing business essentially to today's dollars by using the cost of living adjustments from the Bureau of Economic Analysis's CPI. So we took the rates, the most recent 2003 rates, and essentially brought them forward to today's dollars, and those are the rates that are included for today. And then moving forward in the garage forecast, we projected out through 2024, what would happen if there were no rate increase in the garages? And we worked backwards from there in determining the tax impact, because as the manager alluded to in the beginning of the discussion, with an enterprise fund, if the fund ends the year in a deficit, by the rules of the Department of Revenue, that deficit must be raised on the tax rate. So the fund does have an existing balance in the fund, and on the forecast that's on the screen here, you can see that it is currently operating at a current-year deficit. So each year, that fund balance that is accumulated gets smaller, and that will continue to happen through to 2021, where if there is no rate increase, it will, the deficit will surpass the fund balance, and that amount will need to be raised on the tax rate. So that amount will continue to grow each year, and each year, the difference between the expenses in the enterprise and the revenue earned in the enterprise will need to be made up on the tax rate by all the taxpayers in Lowell. The first slide that we reviewed in the presentation showed the analysis of the revenue that we project for the Hamilton Canal Garage, and that will take a few years to build up to its full potential, which would be about $950,000 a year. However, we are already paying the debt service on the design of the garage. So the design is near completion, and we are, we stand ready to begin construction pending a loan order from the City Council. Once we go through the construction phase and those costs are funded with a bond to be paid back, the debt service from the enterprise, that full cost on the enterprise fund will be about $2.4 million a year. So that cost alone, the revenue from the garage alone is not enough to sustain the debt service, and it will not be that garage a profitable venture until the bond is fully paid back. So that will bring down, just for that one garage alone, the enterprise as a whole without an increase to the revenue for the enterprise fund. So we've laid out the numbers in the forecast, we've tweaked these recently to try to make them as true a projection as we can, but we're happy to discuss this in any detail or answer any questions that the committee may have. Thank you.
Questions? If I could, thank you, Mr. Chairman. To the Chief Financial Officer, have we done a five-year projection based upon the proposed or the second proposal, if you will, for the rate increases? And I would imagine, if you have those numbers, they're not as red as what we're seeing in this slide.
That's right. We've run a few additional projections, they're not the ones in this presentation here, but it will, the rate increase as proposed will sustain the balance of the fund, and it's a holistic approach to the ordinance, so it's not just an amendment to the rates of the garage, but also to the fines and fees, and that will work towards sustaining the enterprise funds.
Even with the $1.5 million deficit on the Hamilton Canal Innovation District Garage?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, there was also, and this analysis, as has been said, applies to that one garage. There is an expectation that we will need two garages, and probably sooner rather than later. The, and so in talking to the CFO, that would likely roughly double the numbers that you're seeing here, if there's no change in the rate structure. I also want to mention that in terms of deferred maintenance in the garages, if, this does not include addressing deferred maintenances, maintenance in the garages, other garages around the city, that currently, I'm told by Mr. Navin, is about $7 million. That will obviously have to be done over time, but these figures would exclude deferred maintenance as well, which of course only increase if we don't address those. I also would ask an opportunity to, I did ask DPD to do an analysis of what we're looking at down in the Hamilton Canal in terms of demand for parking. I know, I think there's concern in that district right now with much of what's happened there. For instance, the Lowell Community Health Center has concerns that if, when the courthouse comes online and there isn't adequate parking, that it would impact, adversely impact patients trying to park. Right now, it's tight in the Early Garage, but there's concern about that. But I will just quickly talk about a few things for the Council. The trial court, as I mentioned, when it was first proposed, when we made the agreement to provide 300 spaces, which is roughly for employees, because the judges, those spaces will be, they number about 38, and those will be at the side of the garage. So these would be for employees. Since that time, instead of 144,000 square foot garage, what's being built right now is a 240,000 square foot courthouse, not garage, courthouse. And so that, when they made the last forecast for parking connected to the Hamilton, to the Judicial Center, this, it's now changed quite a bit. The project designers confirmed the final design, and the only onsite parking, as I said, is the 38 spaces for the judges in the courthouse. So everything else would rely on the garage or on-street parking, which, as we know, is in tight demand down in that area. So right now, there's an estimate that there will be at least 2,025 parking spaces needed each day for all of the courts in the Registry of Deeds. DCAM will provide, as I said, parking for the judges. Our obligation under the agreement is to provide 300 spaces, period, that's what we committed to. But since that 2009 agreement, in the construction of the Early Garage, there's been a number of changes in the area. The Lowell Community Charter Public School dramatically expanded, and at the time the Early Garage was constructed, the school was actually in danger of losing its charter. And today, the school is expanding and adding new lower and upper grades, as well as building new athletic facilities in the neighborhood. Mill Number Five is obviously new and very successful, commercial use and becoming more and more successful. The Community Health Center continues to create more jobs, and they predict including over 300 new jobs created in the facility on Jackson Street. Addon Mills in the Counting House lofts have reserved 75 spaces each in the garage to meet its, their parking needs. There's a total breakdown of all of the spaces, including the proposed spaces in the Hamilton Canal District, Parcells Two and Four, expectant will need 250 spaces. Parcel Five, which is a planned development, 150 spaces. Parcells Eight and Nine, the Wynn Project, is expecting to need 200 spaces. One Ten Canal, obviously occupied now, is, has a demand of 125 spaces. Parcel Eleven, which is residential and retail, again, planned, but, you know, some of these are very near to getting started, but at any rate, Parcel Number Eleven looks for 90 spaces. Parcells Fifteen and Sixteen, 700 spaces. Watermark, Parcel Seventeen, would have a demand of 150 spaces. The National Park Service, which there's a land swap on the agenda tonight concurrent with the Hamilton Canal, we would be providing spaces, 125 spaces. And as I said, the trial court is, has a large number. Counting House Lofts, 75 spaces. The Charter School, 150 spaces. Addon, 75. Lowell Community Health Center, 275. And just transient traffic for the Health Center in Mill Number Five, over 600. So what that brings us to right now, what we have on, either in existence or planned, is the Hamilton Canal Garage, that first one, that is 925 spaces. The Early Garage, which was constructed, opened in 2009, 917 spaces. And then on-street parking, and this was the proposed, 2016, was 20 spaces. So the shortfall is, looks like, when all's in, 1,588 spaces. So the, we will need another garage, if not more, but at least another one, and that would probably be needed, as I said, in the near future in order to accommodate the demands that are already in existence and those that will be in existence very, very soon. So, and I'm happy to give this whole breakdown to the committee and to the Council so you have that. Again, we're just trying to provide informations to the Council for their review.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of your staff. And I understand, I understand the point. As I look at the worksheet, well, just to let you know, Madam Manager, it was, I don't know, Connor can refresh my memory, it was a couple of months ago when this first came before us, and we had many speakers, many business owners from downtown come and oppose this for a number of reasons, and I understand, and I actually agree with them. They're trying to do business, they're trying to expand and stay downtown, they want to stay downtown, but the cost of doing business is significant, and it's rising, especially in light of the maintenance issues and some of the other downtown issues that were, that they're faced with. So this was the second time that we've taken a look at it, and again, when it was presented at the public hearings, still concerns, and I understand their concerns. I guess my question- I guess my question is, you know, at what point does a city start getting out of the, the parking business? If you look at, you know, large cities across the Commonwealth, do we start looking at private investment? Because as we move forward, this, this worksheet does show that, you know, these parking garages by far are not sustainable. We're looking at, while there's a, a demand, um, we look at the cost of just a debt service, and we don't come close, in fact, it's almost triple what we take in in revenue. So, at what point can we get, um, you know, private, um, you know, it, it's a good problem to some degree. As you know, you and I sat here a number of years ago when they were, when, when they were running huge deficits, they were poorly maintained, and they were, they were not occupied very well. So, um, you know, the concern is we don't want to start losing businesses. One question I do have, and it was raised at both meetings, are the agreements we have with Middlesex Community College and UMass Lowell. What type of revenue, what, what are the rates, um, you know, we had asked for that information, and perhaps it was sent, we get so many emails, I'm not sure. What, what is that rate? What is the comparison? And while I do understand the downtown, um, breaks certainly for seniors and disabled folks, how, what does that, I guess two questions. What is the number of spaces that are affected by the, um, you know, the elderly and the disabled? And, and I agree, we should keep that, but also, what are the number of spaces that are being used at what we think is a reduced rate?
Middlesex and, uh,
Middlesex and UMass.
Nick, can you address that? We did, I, I think Nick has those numbers for you.
Uh, thank you. So, um, I'll start with, uh, the universities. I believe when you, uh, mentioned, uh, UMass Lowell and the agreements that they have, uh, the agreements are actually, uh, what they've acquired, uh, with easements attached to property that they've acquired. So, um, UMass Lowell, uh, has the Innen Conference Center, which was originally the Lowell Inn, and, um, as part of a, I guess you would call it, private-public collaboration in order to spur the development of that property, uh, there was an easement which allowed the hotel to have two floors of that five-floor facility, um, essentially free of charge, uh, for a term of 99 years. And by virtue of the university acquiring that property, when they purchased the ICC, they're also able to take advantage of that easement. So, um, although it, you know, may be, uh, described as like a parking agreement, it's really, you know, it's an easement that goes along with that property, and similarly so with the Wanda Lancet Office and Technology Center. So, it's my understanding that that was a dilapidated mill, and then to spur the, uh, economic development in that area, there was a, a collaboration with, uh, then the developers of Wanda Lancet Office and Technology Center, where they would have 720 spaces at a, a agreed-upon rate by easement. And, uh, in, um, I believe it was the early 2000s, uh, the university acquired two of the five parcels that comprised the Wanda Lancet Office and Technology Center, and by virtue of that acquisition, uh, they were able to take advantage of a portion of those 720 spaces free of charge, which amounts to, uh, 233 spaces. I'd just like to note that although the university, uh, has the ability to utilize those 233 spaces, they, uh, are not doing so. However, they could, um, you know, if they, if they found the need. Uh, moving on to Middlesex Community College, um,
Can I stop here?
Yes, of course.
The 233, we're, they're not utilizing them, then who is?
Uh, so, no one is? So, from, so the Wanda Lancet Office and Technology Center, they're able to have up to 720 spaces. Currently, in the aggregate, uh, they are using approximately 360.
In the garage or in those associated lots?
In the garage.
Okay.
In the, in the, in the AOT garage. So, um, because of that, we have the opportunity to use the spaces that they are not using, and we sell them at, you know, the market rate or any applicable discount. Currently, the AOT is not, uh, fully occupied, um, at its apex on the business day, uh, you know, generally speaking, we have the entire fifth floors and sixth floors open, uh, and vacant, really. Uh, the main, um, source of parking at that facility is, uh, currently the Lowell High School students, uh, you know, faculty, staff, and the central, uh, administration. Middlesex Community College is, uh, someone that, they're our largest, uh, client, and we are their sole source of parking, uh, for their Lowell campus. And, um, you know, historically, they've enjoyed, uh, you know, a, um, a parking arrangement where they've been, uh, given parking at a discount. And, um, but as our rate has matured in subsequent negotiations, we've, uh, no longer, you know, been able to, um, provide that discount. And, uh, be, when I began my tenure, it just so happened that it was time for negotiations, and, uh, you know, the parking department and the administration at the time made it clear to Middlesex Community College that, you know, in subsequent, uh, terms, that we would need to pare down the discount significantly, that, that what we've offered in the past. And, um, whereas when I walked in, they were enjoying a discount of like 65% over the market rate, and, um, you know, we brought that down in the subsequent to 50% of the market rate, and now we have, the term of their agreement is expiring this fiscal year, uh, on June 30th, and, you know, we've given them a proposal for three years that, again, pairs down their discount year over year to 40% over discount, 30% and 20%. One thing that tempers,
Okay, so, can I just, um, ask some questions? So, how many spaces are we talking about? And there still exists a discount? I mean, i- if the agreement is adopted, then there's a gradual, uh, there's a gradual adjustment over a number of periods, but they're still going to be going, they're still, um, I'd say enjoying a discount at this point?
Uh, yes, that's currently the case. They, um, so they have 220, uh, pass cards that their faculty and staff uses, and their students, uh, validate, uh, approximately 180,000 tickets, uh, annually. So, at their, and it, you know, it's turnover, like classes will come in, they'll leave, new students will come in. Uh, concurrently, at, uh, it's the most dense period of time, uh, I would say that they occupy somewhere in the neighborhood of 400 to 600 parking spaces, uh, just with the student body on the weekday business days, and that's across, uh, all five facilities.
And who, and the university, they validate those, so the students park for free?
That's right. The Middlesex Community College validates the parking, and they pay for, uh, the bill.
So, they, they occupy anywhere between 620 and 820 spaces per day, and primarily the Lowell Lox Garage?
Uh, I would say that, um, the, the teachers and faculty and staff certainly are at the Lowell Lox Garage, they prioritize that, and, uh, the other large, uh, portion of the student population is at the Davidson Lot, the Joe Downs Garage, the Leo Roy Garage. But they're also, um, you know, the Leo Roy Garage is proximal, they have several assets on Middle Street. And then also at the early garage and the AOT as well, they're parking there every day.
What is their rate, their current rate?
So, uh, their current, uh, amount that they pay annually is $566,000.
Now, what is their rate per space, please?
So, it averages out to be, uh, approximately $2.50 per trip?
Maybe if you, uh, maybe, uh, Chairman wants to know the discount that they're currently enjoying from the market rate?
So, that averages to be, uh, roughly, uh, between, uh, 40 and 50% over market rate.
Okay, and what is the market rate currently?
So, for an average trip that they're taking, uh, for a four-hour trip, it's, uh, about $4.50.
Okay, what about the, um, the, I'm trying to get it, what the, what the, oh, the 20, tell me the 220 pass cards?
Those, uh, there's no discount applied to those besides what's available by ordinance, so those 220 pass cards are billed at the group billing discount.
What, what is that, what is that existing rate? And all I have before me is the ordinance.
It's currently $52 per pass per month?
So, 52, and if you don't have a group discount, what is the market rate for an, for a pass card holder?
So, the market rate for a pass card is $64 for an individual that is not a downtown resident.
The reason why I ask these questions, if you look through these garages, you see some are, um, somewhat consistent, the early, the Downs, the, um, even the street revenue. And then you look at the, you look at some of the other garages, Lowell Lox, um, Davidson Lot is smaller, but even the AOT, and there's significantly less revenue coming in, and those are because of these deals that have been, um, agreed upon, and that's, that's hurting one of the revenue sources. So, um, and that's an, and that's a large number of spaces that Middlesex Community College are using on a daily basis, and, um, and it affects the bottom line. And I can understand the frustration from businesses when they say, some, you know, we're, we're paying this rate, and then others have, you know, a reduced rate, and to me, there should be some fairness across, but, and I understand students, you, we want them to come downtown, they probably, they don't have money in their pocket for parking, that's why Middlesex picks it up. But that burden is landing on other, you know, on, on other users, and that's, that's where the concern that came from the businesses, and that's my concern as well. So, how do we adjust that revenue stream, um, to bring more revenue in, um, is, and I know you're looking at the rates, but, you know, the, the, the issue that they bring forward, um, the business owners, and, um, was exactly that, and so, um,
Can I just, I just want to point out one thing that's on your five-year forecast, and that is that UMass Lowell does reimburse for debt service, um, it, and it's consistent, you know, 82, some 82,000 a year. I just wanted to.
Can you explain that a little bit? What is the, what is that from? Which garage, what loan, which loan order?
Uh, that was a part of the $6.6 million loan order that the council authorized for repair work at the Leo Roy and the Lowell Lox Garage. So, um, the city administration negotiated with the Chancellor of the university's team, um, to provide a prorata reimbursement for the debt service on the work done on the Lowell Lox Garage, because they do utilize a large portion of the garage. So, they have agreed with the city, and it was memorialized in the strategic master agreement with the city, um, that they would provide that reimbursement through the life of the bond.
So, they run the garage, the city runs the Lowell Lox, right? Do they, does UMass Lowell, um, recover any return, retained revenue from that? Do they, I mean, when they have events, for instance, and I go to an event, I'm paying, say they have something in the, you know, in the conference space, conference spaces, the city doesn't generate, the university does not get any retained revenue?
If the university uses the two floors that they have in their easement, they don't pay the city anything. If their events utilize any of the three spaces that, three floors that we have, they pay us for those spaces.
Okay, okay, good. Councilor Malanoff, if question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the chairman brings up a good point about the, uh, revenue on the Lowell Lox Garage, but as has been pointed out, two of the five floors are part of that 99-year easement agreement, so unfortunately, there's not too, too much we can do with that. Except, if you recall, I think I said many months ago that when we built that garage, we actually designed that northern end to actually support, in addition to the Innen Conference Center, it could be maybe even additional garage spaces if the university and/or the city decided to go in, in, in that direction. I guess my question is, and this is again, a good discussion, it's been before us before, what was the outreach, um, this evening for the subcommittee? Because the attorneys that were here a couple of weeks ago, I don't see them in the audience, I see some people from the downtown, um, here. So, I guess my question is, what was the outreach? And we had mentioned earlier before the start of the meeting whether or not there could be some consortiums established by the, either landlords of these buildings where these lawyers are located, or the lawyers themselves could create a, you know, consortium, um, you know, to, to do that, to try to lower, lower their rate. And, uh, if that should fail, talk to the, talk to the landlords, talk to the landlord and say, you know, our rates are going to be going up $20 per space per month, you know, would you do $10 per space per month, so that, you know, to keep us here in your building? I mean, there's some incentive, in my opinion, um, and, and an expense like that could possibly be, you know, a tax write-off, you know, on, on the landlord, uh, for the landlord.
Thank you. So, um, you know, we were asked to report to the subcommittee. It's my understanding there will be no vote tonight because of the public hearing that is still open, uh, and, uh, and we did speak with the clerk, so it would be expected that this matter, at the discretion of the subcommittee, whatever the subcommittee decides, but, uh, there, there's not expected to be a vote under the rules.
Councilor Malanoff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, yeah, I do concerned as well with the, um, steep increase that we, we shown, um, a couple of meetings ago with regard to the rate. I know that we need to raise, um, the rate to pay for the garage and the new garage, as well as the repair, uh, for, um, all this garage, um, you know, um, at the same time, I also even more concerned that is, um, if we not do anything about it, it's going to fall on taxpayers. A lot of them is not using that garage, or this garage, really. Uh, so, uh, I see the, um, the do-nothing that is going forward, that we're going to pay, uh, per homeowners, average homeowners in 2021 is going to pay, you know, increase in, in, in taxes on it. Uh, so that, that increase in tax in 2021, is that also reflect on the, you know, the high school, uh, as well as the maintenance of any garages coming up as well?
So, the high school and, and the CFO can, can, um, bring this to better clarity, but likely by 2024, we will be seeing the dead impact in the high school, uh, in term, from the high school in terms of the tax rate. Perhaps the CFO would like to, for-
The city manager is exactly correct in, in that statement. The amounts that are shown in the presentation that we discussed, the tax rate impact, is only for the amounts that need to be raised to cover the deficit in the parking enterprise. So, any amounts on the tax bill for, uh, the, the debt service for the high school, um, construction bonds would be over and above this amount listed in the presentation.
I see. The other question I have is that, you know, I, I, I probably concur with, uh, the chairman, uh, sentiment about, um, you know, this garage that we have, it seemed like we run into deficit, and that, uh, maybe we ought, we ought to think about better way to run this garage as if it's business, or not privatize it, you know? I mean, if we can't afford it, I mean, going forward, eventually, it's going to fall on taxpayers. So, um, what, what comment do you have on that?
Um, thank you. You know, we're happy to look at whatever options the subcommittee and council recommends the, um, and we can further explore. Uh, one of the things, and I know when the last time the rates were raised, and I was sitting on the council with the chairman at the time, and I think at that point, it had probably been 15 years again before, uh, when it had last been adjusted, and at that time, I think we had to double the rate. But, um, putting that aside, um, you know, this is, has been 15 years. It actually has run in the black, um, until, you know, in, in, until very recently. It has actually sustained itself, and that was the idea of adjusting the rates 15 years ago. And so, for these 15 years, even though we haven't adjusted them, it has operated in the black. Um, one of the concerns, and we're, we're happy to research it, but I, I think some cities who have privatized, the rates are nowhere near as low as what these are. You know, when, when you turn it over to a private affair, we can examine and research what options there are, um, but, you know, I know, uh, rates can, when, when it's owned by a private company, they can raise significantly. So, I think what the city has tried to do is keep the rates as fair as possible so that it, it covers the enterprise fund, it covers the needs, but it's not, you know, trying to over-profit, profiteer on those who use the garage. But we're, whatever the subcommittee wants us to research, we will.
Madam Manager's response was, go along where, a couple of weeks ago, when this ordinance about the increase in rate came about, I think most of the council agreed that, yes, there should be rate increase, but incrementally increase, not wait 15 years. And so, your response, if your response is that in lieu of privatize it, maybe we ought to run it like a business and do incremental increases every few years. That way, we don't wait 15 years and then give a 40% increase, you know? So, um, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Malanoff?
Uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, again, the memo dated from, uh, Again, the memo dated from, I'm sorry, dated March twelfth from Connor Baldwin does talk about the fact that what we're discussing is clearly a delicate balance, and trying to catch up with where we could or should have been. And when we met a few months ago, and looking at the four-year period that we're looking at now, we're looking at a ten to fifteen percent increase, which we decided to take a step back. Now we're looking from FY seventeen through FY twenty-one, the four-year period, we're looking at about a, a two-point-two percent increase to make these numbers work. So I think you all have done your job to bring back to the finance subcommittee what is reasonable within that definition of a delicate balance. So, again, I know we're not voting tonight, but I think you've made strides in getting us to a point of logic. And if we can get some of the business owners and some of the tenants that are downtown to meet with, either the finance subcommittee, or meet with the administration, to talk about how they go about paying and staying in the, in the downtown. But it's clear based upon what we've heard tonight that we need to raise rates. And as tough as it was, and we can all go back when we had to revote the Early Garage, how tough that was for us to take that vote, but we did, and the garage now has been up for a long time, and it's obviously successful, except the sign keeps falling off the, the side of the building. Other than that, it's been very successful. So I think that we'll get to where we need to be, and I certainly appreciate the presentation and the information that was brought before us tonight. Thank you.
Right, right. So I, I concur, I think that makes sense to continue to try to, you know, not that we're delaying this, but I, I think it makes a valid point, that we try to bring some, some others, some support, some, you know, some balance with property owners downtown. You know, part of the problem with this, and the reason why I, and I understand perhaps rates can be a little bit higher for, when it's a private development, but by the same token, the cost of construction, the, the cost of this building is thirty-five million, that's a staggering amount, and a private business could do it at significantly less cost because it's public construction. I'm, I'm wondering, is design complete on this? So we're at a hundred percent design and ready to proceed with?
Substantially complete on the design, Mr. Chairman.
I, I would just be curious if there is some comparison that you could bring forward on what the cost would be for private construction versus public construction, because it's usually twenty, could be twenty, thirty percent, which, that leads to the debt service that we have to absorb on an annual basis, and it's not keeping pace with the revenue. So I, I, I thank you for the information, and if, I guess we'll bring this vote, Madam Ma, Madam Manager?
Oh, no.
Keep calling you Madam Ma. Counselor, Counselor Noon, anything else? Counselor Conway? Counselor Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick comments. If, two weeks ago, we had a number of people come up here and speak, and you could see that they were obviously frustrated. These people run a business, and if anybody's been involved with a business, if you don't run the business correctly, you're going out of business. And I think this is a perfect example of what we have done in a municipality, in the city of Lowell, not running the business correctly. I mean, we can sit here and say, well, we, we didn't raise those rates for fifteen years. Well, whose fault is that? It's not the person that's standing up there saying, why is this increased by this amount? I, I'm just, just for my own amusement, I sat here and said, okay, fifteen years ago, if a plumber or electrician came to my house and charged me sixty dollars, probably reasonable. Now if they rap on my door tomorrow, and they're gonna charge me a hundred dollars, what am I gonna say? I'm gonna say, well, wait a second, last year, last few years, you were charging sixty, now you're charging a hundred. And, and how about this for the explanation? Well, I haven't raised my rates for fifteen years. Well, what's your response gonna be? Well, that's not my fault. That's not doing good business. So, the bottom line is, what would we try to do? We would try to probably do some type of a compromise, and I think that's what these people are standing up here talking about, is that if we could go back to the table, I think that, and again, going forward, in any other aspect that we have of, of business in, in our city, we should be reviewing some of these things to make sure that we're not, that there's not years and years elapsing, and that we haven't done something about it. And, and we touched on, just for a second, we touched on the, the fact of checking out other municipalities and, you know, privatizing and so forth. I, I'm wondering whether there are other municipalities that have done something, a little creative here, not necessarily privatized, but have done something that we might be able to go to school on, and perhaps bring in some additional revenues. I don't know off the top of my head, but I'm wondering if there is some way that we could reach out and take a look at that. And it might not, you know, they might be running into the same problems we have, but again, going forward, you, you can't, you can't let fifteen years elapse. Thank you.
Well, I, look, I, I understand that point, Counselor Conway, but it's, we have lapped some, some deferred maintenance. But by the same token, this fund has been running in the black. So it's difficult, it's difficult to bring a, a rate increase to people downtown where they see that it was several million in the black. It's just this new debt service that is coming, and that's causing, it's strictly, with the exception of deferred maintenance, and that's something that really should be addressed. That was a primary concern, one of the primary concern, where I'm paying my, you know, I'm paying my rate, and the services that are being delivered aren't as expected. So it, just, just so we're clear, it's, it's, it's all, it's the new, it's the new billing, that's the bottom line. We're adding two-point-nine million dollars of, of new debt, in addition to some short-term borrowing, and the revenue is not gonna come in to cover that. So, but I guess just moving forward, maybe for the next meeting, what is the plan for the deferred maintenance? I mean, you're talking upwards of seven million, that's, you know, that's another loan order.
And we can bring in a plan, I, we did speak about that, and it's actually stretched out over a period of time. It's not going to be done in one fell swoop, and it's a matter of prioritizing what has to be done. But we're happy to present that to you as well. And I'll also provide you, Mr. Chairman, and the, the subcommittee and the council, with the parking expectations in the Hamilton Canal District, because I think it, it's hard to consider one without the other, and so we'll, we'll make that available to everybody as well.
It's, it's a good problem, it's just, it's, you know, having, so I, I used, did you say that there's the need in the Hamilton Canal and jam plan is fifteen-eighty-eight?
That's the debt, that's the shortfall.
That's a shortfall.
Based on what we have, and so I'll, and that's when the Hamilton Canal is, is completed, but there's a, there's a significant shortfall that we're facing, even with this just one garage, and that's why there will be, and we'll give you a further bird's-eye view of that, a need for a second, but we'll, we'll provide this to you, and perhaps whatever the desire is of the subcommittee to have Planning and Development come in and, and talk to you in greater detail about what are the needs we're facing, because it's, it's parking, and we wanna pay for it, but it's also economic development, and we wanna get the tax dollars on the books too, so.
Right, no, I think that makes sense, Counselor Malanazza, ideas to, you know, get the landlords, it's, you know, I'm, I'm not sure, perhaps the business organizations knew about this meeting where it was posted. I'll, I guess I'll take the, the blame in that, I didn't reach out to them, but we will do, we'll do so for the public hearing. But is there a plan for the AOT when we have two floors that are emptied, and the city essentially is subsidizing that, a, a large portion of that garage because they're a reduced rate? That comes out the school department side as maintenance of effort, so what is the real revenue figure that is coming out of the outside, outside of, you know, maybe concerts or something at the University of Medame?
You know, Mr. Chairman, I think what we will do is look at, as, as has been mentioned, the agreement with the Middlesex Community College is coming due the end of this fiscal year, so we will be in negotiations again. It may also include looking at where the garage, what, where the cars are being parked, and we wanna be fair to everybody, but, you know, if we can move some cars, we wanna engage in discussion about that as well.
I think that makes a lot of sense. I know nobody wants to park very far, but, I mean, when we have, you're right, we have to prioritize and utilize these, these spaces where we can to make up some of that revenue, because, you know, we know that those spaces downtown in that, in the heart of the business district are very desirable, so. Counselor Malanazza, do you wanna make that form of a motion?
Yes.
Is that through?
Actually, the form of a motion, I'd like to move that we accept the report as a report of progress, and look forward to getting the information that Madam Manager and the CFO has promised to give the subcommittee at our next meeting. Again, reminding the members of the subcommittee, the time is of the essence, we're looking at FY nineteen to get something in place so that we can be able to afford the new, the new debt service. And I guess I would also move, even though I know Susan LeMay is here, I would move that we table a second item until the next meeting, does that make sense?
Makes sense. So, motion to bring this information forward as a report of progress by Counselor Malanazza, seconded by Counselor Noon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, that motion carries. I just entertain one more motion that we request the city manager or the Planning and Development come up with a plan, or try to reach out to business owners, landlord, landlords primarily, Counselor, was that what you said?
Yes, correct, yes.
And to see if there could be some cost sharing.
Right, cost sharing.
Motion by Counselor Malanazza, seconded by Counselor Noon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, motion carries. I think this is very helpful, we got a, I think, a thorough explanation of rates, and we're trying, we are bringing parity to, you know, to rate payers across, at least with some of the institutions. I think that, that'll be important information, and the additional revenue that'll be generated as a result of that.
So.
So, thank you, Counselor.
So, Mr. Chairman, the second item on the agenda, would that move to the next meeting as well?
Yeah, that's the next motion, motion by Counselor Malanazza, seconded by Counselor Noon, to, to reschedule another meeting, and we'll talk about property valuation, and if, I think it'd also be important, when you talk about loading debt in two thousand and twenty-four for the high school, what impact, you know, what impact, is there any, any, you know, bond anticipation notes, short-term borrowing that will be non-reimbursable? I, I know the SBA has sort of a rolling reimbursement at that point, but is that when the expectation is to, to take the loan order out? I mean, I think, I know that warrants a much longer discussion, but perhaps we can talk a lot at the next meeting.
That may be where the fuller impact is felt in two thousand and twenty-four, it's likely going to be felt even sooner. It will be, obviously, something that will be rolling and increasing, but we can give you that, that.
Okay.
Report as well.
We'll schedule another meeting, and we won't wait as long this time, we'll probably have to grab another night, but thank you, Ms. LeMay, for coming. We apologize, I should have known that this was not going to be a, a one-hour discussion to get all these important issues to discuss, but I think this was, it was helpful, and we'll get the message out to the business organizations and see if we can, you know, come up with a little bit more compromise for the business owners.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn, by Counselor Malanazza, seconded by Counselor Noon. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed, motion carries. This meeting stands adjourned.